Eighth, 2017 work session of the Forsyth County Board of Education. If you would all rise, Dr. O'Bearden does the invocation and pledge.
Good evening, everyone. Join me in a moment of silent reflection, please. Salute. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Ms. Crowe is not able to be with us. We wish her and Roger well. All votes tonight, if they're unanimous, will be a four oh vote, just to keep it simple. All right. We have before us an agenda. Do we have a motion to approve the agenda?
It's moved.
Second. Motion by Tom, and second by Nancy. All in favor? Okay, that's unanimous. First up is Presentation and Discussion, the Georgia Milestone Results, with Beth Kiefer and Tim Keiser. Keiser?
Good afternoon. How are you all?
This is a good start. Great way to start.
Yes, it is. As you all know, I'm Beth Kiefer, Director of Assessment and Accountability. And with me is Tim Keiser. Thank you very much. He's our Accountability Coordinator, and he's been a great add to our team. We're going to present information about the Georgia milestones. So this assessment update is specifically about that. And I want to refresh your memory about the achievement levels before we go further. In the past, especially with Georgia High School graduation test or other tests, they thought of the state assessments as pass/fail. And the milestones really look for, in three through eight EOGs and the EOCs, what level understanding the student has attained or mastered. So they look at beginning learners who have not mastered material and need more support, developing learners who have made it, they can go on to the next grade level, but they're still going to need some support, proficient learners who have, they have met the standards, they understand them, they're able to go on to the next level, the next course, and then your distinguished learners who are well beyond ready for the next standard or the next course, the next level. So keep those levels in mind as we go through the data, because that's what most of the data revolves around. So for EOGs, and I'm going to go rather quickly through the data, so if something strikes you, please feel free to interrupt, ask questions. But what you're looking at is us compared to the state. And this is for those students in the developing and higher, so developing, proficient, distinguished. And you can see we're well above the state. The same with percent of students in the proficient and higher. So those that level, those levels of students who are well on their way. And then again, with the distinguished learners, we are well above the state. The next slide is the mean scale score. The proficient learners, developing learners score around 475, proficient learners score 525 or above. We've got a scale score list, or a link, so parents or whoever's viewing this presentation can actually look at what the ranges are. I only point this paper out to you so that you can look at it if you have questions about them. But that first particular piece, English Language Arts, Math, Science, Social Studies, this is for the third through eighth, and you can see what the ranges for the scores are. First page is EOG, the second page is EOC. It includes the grade conversion scores for each of the levels. So that page is available for anybody looking through here for yourselves, if you need it, if you have questions about it. But as you can see, with our mean scale scores, we've done really well in comparison to the state. Those were all third through fifth grade EOGs. The next set of slides looks very similar, and it's the sixth through eighth grade EOGs, developing and higher, proficient and higher, distinguished and, the highest row is distinguished. Just so that you're aware, eighth grade science and math, those two particular areas, we take EOCs in as well. So the state aggregated the data with EOG takers and EOC takers to give you this data so that you can see how your eighth graders overall were faring in the field of science. So this data is combined, while it says EOG for science and math, it's actually EOG and EOC. In science, we actually have all but 15 students across the system that take the physical science EOC in eighth grade. In math, we have some students at each school that take the math EOC. Again, in sixth through eighth grade, the mean scale score, the scale scores interpretation guide is there. We do well in comparison to the state. For proficiency levels, when we looked at this in a different way, looking at third through eighth grade EOGs, mass, looking at the scores in mass, ELA in science, we saw growth, we saw movement, even though you see the negative one in that proficient, obviously that set of students or that group of students has moved up, because they did not move down to developing. Science or Social Studies and Math, it kind of held, maintained. We did not increase, but we did not fall back. That one, that negative one could be .6, .7. So that, when we look at reading, we look at Lexile scores for students, and those scores are determined through the reading portion of the EOG and the EOC. There is a stretch Lexile band that the state uses. You can click on that particular link at the bottom to show. But in all grade levels, fourth through eighth, the students are actually above, given the score that you see, the students are actually above that score on average. And, but the bigger part of this particular story is when you look at fourth through eighth grade, you see growth. Even though they're already above the Lexile band, they're still growing. There are no Lexile measures in second grade, so we can't do a third grade comparison. Basic reflections for the end of grade. The students in Forsyth County schools had the highest scores in the state for large school systems, and that's important, because we look at other systems that are very much like ours. That's over 600 students, and we were testing 2,000 students or 3,000 students. So we looked, we tested highest in those. Students scoring proficient and higher in all the four content areas ranged from 25 to 37% higher than the state. System-wide, ELA and science scores showed overall growth, with students moving from proficient to distinguished, as we looked at in the chart before. And then the Lexiles, as you saw just now, all grade levels demonstrated Lexile increases within the cohorts. We do want to look a little bit further at math, focus on moving a greater number of students from the proficient to the distinguished. So that would be a growth area for us.
Yeah, and as we, when we're looking at the systems over 600, basically we started with 1,000 was our number, because that's what's been used in the past. So, and looking at the data this year, we bumped it back 100 at a time until we found the number. So it's really good progress looking at it in another way, that we consider over 600 as being a large system of students tested rather than 1,000. So your EOC results are very similar to EOG. We outperformed the state in every category. You'll see that it's very consistent. That's our developing and higher students in EOC, are proficient and higher, and are distinguished. All of these, what I had to do with end-of-course testing, because we test throughout the year and we have a large administration in the fall with the EOCs as well as in the spring, I took all of our system scores from both semesters and combined them to find the average, and I did the same with the state's data. So what you're looking at here, if somebody were to take these comparisons and look at the numbers closely, it's a little bit different from what's released on the state's website, because they're probably only going to click on spring. So they would have to click on fall and spring testing and average them to find these numbers. Mean scale score, you'll see the same thing, Forsyth County schools, outperformed the state by a considerable amount. These are the proficiency levels. This shows us how our students performed. We see positive growth in every content area, with the exception of geometry, where we maintained. Our Lexile scores, so at the high school level, we're looking at, when we talk about the cohort of students, the 2017 cohort, those are students who took the ninth grade lit test, and then we're comparing them to those same students on their eighth grade test. So that's that Lexile comparison. We see positive growth. The same is true with the American Literature Test, the 2017 cohort. Since there is no 10th grade state test, we're comparing them to their performance in the ninth grade.
Tim, go back to that previous slide for a second, if you don't mind. I just want to point this out, because I think it's important, because we always, we hear a lot from our community about our growth and is our growth impacting student achievement? We get that question on a regular basis, and sometimes people make an assumption, because we're growing, perhaps we're not going to achieve at as high of a level. But you look at this graph, and also the one for grades three through eight, and you can obviously see, not only are we maintaining, we are continuing to improve as we grow. And I think that's very important for us to continue to put out to our public and have people understand that the growth is not having a negative impact on student achievement. It certainly causes an impact going from point A to point B on the road, so we know that. But it is not having a negative impact in the classroom, and I think that's really important for our community to understand. Thank you.
And the better we do, the harder it is to bump up at a percentage point.
Absolutely, absolutely.
When you're at 98, 99, it's really hard to pull it more.
So in our summary here, as I stated, Forsyth County students scored high above the state, looking at students who test, a group of students over 600 per school system. With the exception of physical science, we were second in the state. And I liked to research that. The only system we were behind was Cobb County in physical science. The difference is, we test all eighth graders in physical science. We had 15 eighth graders who took, or fewer than 15, who took the eighth grade science EOG, because we test everybody in physical science for eighth grade. Cobb County, the vast majority of their students take the eighth grade science EOG, and only their advanced students are taking physical science.
Not a real comparison.
Students scoring proficient higher in all content areas ranged 23 to 33% higher than the state. And we demonstrated growth or maintained, with movement to proficient and distinguished levels. And then our Lexile students, our Lexile scores demonstrated increases that were above the state's expectations. And as a grow, we listed geometry. You saw where we maintained there, so we've got that listed as an area where we'd like to move more students into the proficient and distinguished achievement levels. The data, just to give you an idea, the data that we use and how we use this throughout the system. We've got the data analysis that we do for schools here, and then we either aggregate or disaggregate that data and provide it to the schools. We have the district comprehensive needs assessment. Our district data teams here, we're from multiple departments, we work together to look at the data. And then we also have the school-based data teams who we work with as well. School City is our new assessment engine, and it's really been fantastic as far as the way that we're able to look at these reports. And this is just an example, this is part of a page of a report. But we at the district level and at the school level, they can look at these reports, they can pick the roster they want to look at. This would be looking at the 1617 roster to see how did those students perform on the milestones EOG for ELA. If they wanted to, a teacher can change that to the 1718 roster, but leave it on the 1617 test. And now that teacher's looking at the students sitting in that classroom, how did they perform on that test the year before? They can drill down, excuse me, into the domains on where it says sub-score ELA, they can expand that, and they could look at just narrative writing, if they want to see how my students in my classroom right now perform narrative writing. So it's a great way to decide how you want to work with the students you have right now, but then also we can look at it to see where are the weaknesses across the system that we can address.
That's pretty neat. And all the teachers have access to that, so they can, that's good. If students are, if they've got a roster of students, they can access that. That's awesome. So even though they're looking at their class per se, that helps them with their personalized learning, because they can really look at how their students right now. Each child. Wow.
Yes, ma'am. And where you see the levels here with the percentages, if I'm a teacher and I'm looking at this, and of course, this is the entire system on this test, but if I were a teacher, I would see the percentages of my students. If I click on that 8.2%, if I want to design work for my beginning learners, once I click on that, I see only the beginning learners, and I can group them, and I can specifically target that group for improvement to the next achievement level.
Tim, correct me if I'm wrong, doesn't it populate three years' worth of data, is that correct, for School City?
Yes, sir. That's what we've submitted to them, is the last three years of data.
Which is really an advantage for a teacher, to see three years' worth of data on their students, as they're making those plans, and see where they're growing or whether maybe they've been stagnant.
So the teachers already have access to this?
Yes.
This is the first time, the first year?
Yes.
Are they excited, and what's their reaction?
Well, we've mostly spoken with administrators, but they've been very excited, because they can see, it's, I'll give you an example, you know, we've previously presented this in Excel. So we'll put it in spreadsheet format and present it in a way that we think is best for them to, or easiest for them to see it. And working with administrators, I had somebody ask me, said, hey, how can I look at, I want to look at the data for my incoming sixth graders. How can I see that? And I said, well, it'll be loaded into School City next week, this was a few weeks ago. But it's available right now in Excel, and it's learning. He said, I've been working in School City, and I don't really want to use those words anymore, because it's so much easier for them to manipulate this screen versus working through Excel.
And I'm sure it'll take a little while for teachers to see how to manipulate it for their best advantage.
This is very similar to the previous platform we've had, or we had in the past, and so it's very user-friendly. It, you very much can click through and figure out what you need to do next. You can create all sorts of charts, graphs, information, full information, so it's a great, it is a great tool.
So it's a standalone, it's a standalone piece of software, doesn't, not connected to its learning at all?
It's a standalone piece of software, but it's integrated into its learning, so teachers can access it through it.
Okay, through its learning, okay, great.
And they'll take whatever data we send them, so you can calculate AP, SAT, whatever it is that the initial is.
Any initial out there.
Anything.
That's neat.
And mentioning that, on this final screen, where it says data profiles, the data profiles are traditionally where the community is going to look at a school's performance through our website. And so they choose an individual school, and they'll see historical data on how that school has performed. We are in the process of completely rebuilding the data protocols page using the reports from School City. So that'll be a much cleaner look and easier for them to interpret what they're looking at.
Okay, great.
I would be remiss if I did not point out Susan Norris, our assessment coordinator. She is the legs of testing, and did not want to leave her out. This is the data side, but she, we work as a great team, and I appreciate all support. Questions?
It's fun to see how they use it over time.
I think they'll use them a lot.
Great.
Good stuff. Thank you.
Appreciate it. All righty. Well, that's all good news. Next up is the Facilities Plan Timeline Update with Mr. Tim Amerson.
Also try to go through this and skip over a lot of the data charts that you see here, but basically, this is where we've gotten to with the development of the plan. Spent the last year pretty much going back through the schools, doing all the inventory counts, meeting with maintenance folks. We pull our lifecycle reports from, generated from School Dude, to figure out what equipment's going to expire in 2017, 2018, try to look at which pieces of equipment, which schools will start to move into the earnings now for future entitlement. Then after we got most of that together, I had to put all the inventory that we opened this last year into the Capital Outlet Program Portal, so I have to enter all the new classrooms we built at the additions for all the high schools and middle schools primarily, Brandywine and DeSana Middle School especially, and get those in there. And only those schools that we didn't open this year, I had to carry over and not put those in until this last month. Did have to stop and work on some allotment enrollment figures and my new five-year projection based on those. I'll mention the five-year projections here shortly. In March, I'll also issue the official invitation for the Facility Services Unit with the Department of Education to work with us, and it's the official kickoff of our local facility plan five-year update. From April through June, we're kind of closed down as far as any activity we can do. They reconcile our numbers compared with everybody else in the state. And then in June, they give us our new entitlement and projection updates compared to everyone else in the state. Then, as I said, went back, started working through the inventory updates that opened over this last year, or will be open as of August this year. All right. The next chart I'll give you real quick, this is our FTE projection. This is what the state does. Basically, this is a very static number. Right now, they have been generous, they went back and they looked at a two-year spread. Typically, they look at a five-year spread that would go back. But we had the best growth rate by just taking the last three years and looking at the two-year spreads between there. 1,850 students per year. And then they take that 1,850, and they add it to our current enrollment from last spring, on up for the next five years. To compare, we were at 1761 last year when we got this report. So we jumped a good bit on the report. And basically, when you go down to the bottom little chart, you'll see the number 2,273 students. So from June through July, I started putting 2,273 future students into future classrooms, and building those needs into our facility plan. This is our entitlement sheet. This is the chart that kind of says how much our participation based on the entire state need. I did go back through and figure that was at about $3.2 billion total state need, of what we basically participate at, 17.22%, I mean, 1.722% of that total state need.
221581, to be exact.
And basically, that says our cost for the eligible construction needs, the $55 million compared to that $3.2 billion total state needs. And then they take that percentage, and they say, out of the $300 million we're likely to allocate over the next legislative session, that we would earn $5.1 million extra. Now, we're carrying about $8.8 million over the last two years. One of the things I added to this chart, clipped in there at the bottom, you see the line item for the Alliance Academy Innovation. We made that application last August to fund the Alliance Academy. So you see that was truly just about the $68 million from last year's entitlement construction needs, the eligible need, down to our $55 million. We did have a few more projects that were built into the system. We had a new, a few new classrooms that kind of took off the need for it, but came up very close to just about that $13 million that we used from the account last year.
But our rate of growth will just get us right back up there pretty quickly.
So like I said, right now, we're at about $5 million. I mentioned that number of $55 million as our eligible needs going forward, and we're, by doing Denmark, by doing Alliance Academy and the other schools that we've opened, we have whittled that down. Going back in there, putting in the future FTE of the 2,270 students into new classrooms, right now, the construction needs pushes us back up to about $97.5 million. So we've added about $40 million just in the state's calculation of construction need. So we'll start using that compared to the $3.2 billion of state needs, and hopefully up our percentage of the $300 million we get.
So we were, Mr. Amerson and I, we went through a lot of these numbers. The $300 million, I think frustrates me a little bit, because it used to be 200 statewide plus 100 for fast-growing, and then back in 2012-ish, they combined it for the grand total, 300 million. And we've been stuck at that number from then and prior to then. So while they've increased the cost that they allot for construction, they haven't increased the grand total statewide, so we have more students, not only Forsyth, but more in Georgia. So the state is still allocating the same 300 million, which is a lot of money, but it would be nice if that total quantity went up to split the pot statewide.
Sure.
It's still 300 million. I don't, again, it's a lot, but.
Get what we can.
Yeah, the whole state needs more.
The next page before you is what we call the Systems Needs Page. This is where I take the students, we figure out the FTE, put the little chart in the Georgia Department of Education for the allocation of instructional units to FTE counts. You see some of these have a little plus-two, minus-two type numbers. I try to use those where I can, so say Big Creek has a minus-two, their FTE is 900, but actually, I'm just pushing that number up by adding 25 students to earn two more classrooms. So we have a way to kind of get some eligible need out of schools that we will not expand one or two classrooms, but we'll build those into our need. But at the bottom of it, we are now looking for about 200 more instructional units that are eligible for future construction and funding from the state at the elementary level. And then for middle school, we'll have another 148 eligible units. I actually earned enough middle school students that I'm almost halfway through populating middle school number 12 now. So we started with number 11 last year. Now I filled up number 11 and started building into number 12 for future needs. And then for high school, we did have a little dip in this number from the Denmark, then followed by Alliance Academy, but we're now back up to 63. Last year, after we finished doing this, we were at 29 instructional units earned, and now we've already risen back up to 63 units here. So 411 total units that we need, classrooms that we need to build somewhere in Forsyth County to keep up with our 55,000 projected in five years. Coming up, as most of you know, we have set up district-wide meetings that we're going to do, the schools and the district committee members, over the next five weeks, to talk about what all is in the facility plan, what does it mean to us, what the state guidelines are for building this, and to try to make sure we identify those projects that they're looking for, that they think their school needs in there. It's a very basic list, but we will walk through that. A lot of schools, of course, there's a 20-year cutoff period, so if the school was built in 2002 is kind of the cutoff period into the 2017 plan. For us, 15 years, because they get, earn HVAC and kitchen equipment. And then, like I said, 20 years, it would be 1997 facilities that could earn modifications or renovations and some of those type ones. Then, once I get the whole list compiled and we get architectural pricing to all the needs, we'll bring back a, more of a concrete plan for y'all to look at in October. If y'all like what we see, we will invite a survey team to come in. This is made up about four to five members from surrounding counties and systems to come in. They'll review the plan, they'll tour some of our facilities, hear all the wonderful things we are getting done in Forsyth County. And if they give us a clean bill of health and check off on the right box, in December, we should bring back the final plan for your approval. And once that plan's approved, it will go to the State Board of Education and be adopted by them sometime in spring. Any questions?
Just to clarify, when you talked about the lifecycle items, 15 years, 20 years, in other words, when we have our schools, we build them, and over time, eventually, when they hit that 15, 20-year mark, they've accrued credit to the state level, like, yes, we'll help you replace your roof, we'll help you replace your HVAC, or whatever they do. They don't pay the whole amount, they just help us towards that, so.
Again, much like they have with the sort of a pro-rated price per square foot, is the same thing that they have. So if it's a modified Benjamin III ply roof versus a standing seam roof or a shingle roof, they all have their little dollar per square foots that they will apply to that building. And again, it does depend on the building. So if we have a school like Central High School, where you have a 1950's building, but you also have a building that was just completed in 2015, so you have to look through those buildings, which ones qualify in the sum of those totals.
All right. So the point, when you're doing your facilities plan, you're looking at what the schools have, you're looking at the future enrollment, what classrooms we're going to need, but you're also looking at what's going to have to be fixed, which is all a predecessor to future bonds. What do we, what money do we need to fund maintenance items and new construction, some mixtures, all this, it's all necessary before we get to that stage.
And again, as we talk about that sort of concrete list, it is, as you said, and it's more of what I call the system, so it'd be lighting system upgrades, roof system replacements, HVAC system upgrades and replacements. So it's kind of more of a whole-scale thing, more than just re-carpeting or just, you know, that sort of thing. Forecovering is one of the items we can put into the plan, so.
Lot of work. Thank you. Any other questions, Ann? It's a lot of work.
Like I said, we'll be explaining more every Thursday for the next five weeks.
Okay. Actually, Mr. Amerson, you did, and your whole department got some. Actually, Ms. Amerson, you did, and your whole department got some good words when I was speaking to our State Department of Ed representative. He was talking about, we were talking about facilities plan, and he said that when he first started, he used to really look through those very carefully, but he knows now when he sees Forsyth County that he doesn't have to look through it with a fine-tooth comb because he knows it's done right. So that was a compliment to y'all. All righty. Next thing up is the calendar timeline. Mr. Joey Brickell.
When I present the calendar timeline, it's basically the same format that we've used over the last, over the past several years. We present a draft, a sample draft of a calendar to our local school councils on September the eighth. We'll collect feedback from them. We get feedback upfront from them to, in completing a draft that will go out to the public, and that's down between September the eighth and the twenty-second. And then we'll have that draft completed then from the feedback from local school councils, and present the calendar draft to our principals and cabinet on October the sixth, and present it to you all on the tenth at your meeting. We post the draft on the web on October the eleventh after you all have reviewed the draft. And then we'll certainly then communicate internally as well as externally. We receive input online from October the eleventh through the twenty-seventh, and I'll present a calendar draft to you on November the seventh, and then ask you for approval on November the fourteenth.
Okay.
That's the calendar timeline.
Any questions on the timeline?
I just request again, I think like we did last year, when you present the first draft to the LSCs, that we also get just an informal copy just because we start going to the meetings so that we have something to take with us.
And we do encourage people to use that online web feedback when the time comes so that everybody, the staff, the board, all get the same information, which is helpful.
That's right.
All righty. Next up is the redistricting timeline.
We still going to do that?
It's not been done yet.
Sorry, I'm going on vacation.
I think you've heard something about redistricting that, so we, the timeline for redistricting is obviously, as we always do, we'll be, the committee will be redistricting primarily to open the Denmark High School, but also the committee will review overcrowding at existing schools throughout the system, looking at all of those different areas for, as well as when we redistrict, looking at feeder patterns, all of those kind of things. So we'll look at all of that, but primarily to redistrict Denmark as well. The impacted high schools, as at this point, the schools that we believe that will be impacted will be Lambert, South, and West. As in the past, when we opened Denmark into the fall of two thousand eighteen, it will open with grades nine through eleven, so does not open with the senior class. So therefore, that means the rising seniors at the schools that are populating Denmark will remain there. They'll be given, and any siblings of those will have the option to remain there through the out-of-district process as well.
And they can stay there till they graduate, right?
Right.
So if they're in the ninth grade and one's a senior, the ninth grader would be there till they graduate if they chose.
They'd have to provide their own transportation.
Do the seniors all have to fill out the form even though they're seniors, or how does that work?
We have them, we, I think we, in the past, we've had them to do the form, just simply so we, because we have it and it gets in our database, so it's easy to keep up with. Which, you know, of those are, where they are supposed to be versus where they are, does that make sense?
It helps with the future no-shows because you really know they're going to be there.
So we have them do it. But, so the timeline is then, obviously, today presenting you with the timeline. And then next week, we'll ask the superintendent for a recommendation from you all to approve the timeline. September the twelfth, the redistricting committee will present a draft to the board at your four o'clock meeting. On September the thirteenth through the twenty-seventh, that draft will go live soon after the board meeting. On the thirteenth, and they'll have the thirteenth through the twenty-seventh to provide online feedback. October the tenth, the redistricting committee will present a draft to the board with possible revisions based on the feedback at your four o'clock meeting. So that will give us time from the twenty-seventh until, before, right before your meeting on October the tenth, for the committee to review the feedback, make any changes that we feel need to be made. Then we'll present those to you on October the tenth. The seventeenth, that will give you then a week to review those changes and have some time to think about that. On October the seventeenth, we'll ask you to approve the draft with any changes that we made after the feedback. On October the twenty-fourth, there'll be a public forum at West Forsyth High School at six PM. That will be the same format that we've used in the past. You know how that works. And on November the second, we'll have, you have a called board meeting at four o'clock to discuss all the information that you've received up to that point, especially the information that you received from the public forums. If it's new or different information than you've received from the original first round of online feedback. And then on November the seventh, we will present the final draft to you all at your meeting. And on November the fourteenth, the committee will ask the superintendent for a recommendation for you all to approve the eighteen, nineteen district lines at your six o'clock meeting. And then, of course, our out-of-district process, the date for that is November the twenty-seventh through January the nineteenth, which is typically the same that it's been all the time. And this slide just has information about how we communicate, you know, district and school websites, board meetings, videos, online surveys, newsletters, social media, all of those kinds of things. So that is the timeline for redistricting. We'll come back next week and ask you to approve this timeline.
Okay.
Okay?
I would just say, just make sure we dispel any rumors that are out there that this process hadn't started. We just got the calendar today. So just making that real clear to everybody. They think there's preconceived notions of what's happening and it's, we're just starting the process. This has always been a very process-driven process, if you want to put it that way. But yeah, it's very, very calendar-driven. So here we go.
I have one question. You did mention possibly feeder, you know, feeder patterns. Say there is a part of one school that's, you know, we try and keep it so that, you know, it's evenly distributed, like fifty-fifty, or if it's into three schools, it's thirty, thirty, thirty. Will that be presented on September twelfth when you come with the first draft, so everyone will know at that point?
If, if.
If any other schools are affected?
If at the time, if at the time that we, as a committee, present the draft, if there are other schools that we feel we need to look at, that we would, that we would have a recommended change for, then that would be presented at the time we do the first draft. If the committee, for example, if there's not anything that we have at that point in time, then we wouldn't, obviously. But if there is, then we would.
Because you've mentioned that, but it doesn't stated in the, you know, it isn't written down in here anywhere. So if people look at this and say, "Okay, maybe the three high schools are the only thing impacted." And then we come September twelfth and say, "Oh, by the way, we're also impacting middle school and elementary."
Well, I think that's why we said in the first, that the, and Forsyth County schools is redistricting to review overcrowding at existing schools. And so we made that statement to say that we're going to review everything else, all other areas. It's not just to populate Denmark High School, but to review overcrowding at existing schools as well.
Like if you had to switch from one high school to another and that ends up leaving an elementary with ten kids, and they're the only ten kids that go from this one to this one, that's, it's a slight chance you might have to look at to fix a broken feeder pattern. Focus is the high schools.
Yeah. And we would give you our, I mean, obviously, our rationale for why we think we need to fix it.
Right, right.
Sounds like exciting stuff.
Yeah, it is. All right, thanks.
Well, Mr. Perle, do you want to just talk about Alliance and how that feeds into the, just the opportunity of the new school opening up and how that?
I'm sorry, I didn't say.
Do you want to mention the Alliance Academy, how that opens also next year in two thousand eighteen and how that, all the numbers?
Yeah, and actually, just, Randy Canizaro, the principal, will be coming at, is it the September meeting?
Okay.
September meeting to talk specifically about Alliance and how we plan to populate that school. So we have that as a totally separate presentation.
Okay, thank you. All right. Next up, construction update. Mr. Tom Whinney.
Good afternoon.
Good afternoon, Tom.
So fortunately, as students returned last week, we had six schools, six school additions underway, under construction. And each of those were successfully turned over and completed in time for those operations. So those six schools being, from high school, it was West Forsyth High School additions, the four middle schools of Otwell, Vicary, Liberty, and North, and then Dave's Creek Elementary. So that was paramount, obviously, to existing operations to get that done. And then really, the side benefit is now it really allows the district and us and facilities to focus on the two key deliverables of Denmark and Alliance. So, you know, we met just three weeks ago, so out of respect for everyone's, Tom, I don't want to be redundant in a pretty detailed description that I gave you. So I'll just focus on the highlights of the new photos that we've got. Permanent power, if you recall, Sony Power was a critical delivery to get permanent power to Denmark. That allows us to begin the process of all the mechanical startups of the units to get climate control. The other key deliverable is to really, over the next three to four months, get the exterior envelope dried in ahead of winter weather coming in mid-November, which then allows a three, four-month interior finishes process. So fortunately, all of those processes are ahead of schedule or on schedule from the detailed description. So as you see, this first section, A, will be working counterclockwise with that exterior envelope delivery. From a site perspective, you now see the soccer field already sotted. This wet weather obviously helps what's already sotted. It's a little bit of a challenge and hindrance to the softball and baseball field. The key logic there is to get the natural turf down ahead of the artificial turf down. It does control so the dust doesn't get onto the artificial surfaces. Although you still see that artificial intergovernmental agreement field, practice field, and football competition field as dark brown. What you don't see is all the undergrain system currently underway and all the curbing and perimeter and preparation work for the base for ultimately that green artificial turf that'll go down in late September, early October. But the building in sight at Denmark are both proceeding extremely well. That's just another shot from the gymnasium side. So moving on to Alliance, the site is really reaching substantial completion. The difference, obviously, here being no athletic fields like there are at Denmark. And then if you recall, the top of the page that we're using really is the staging area, becomes what is not included in the scope of the parking garage, as we don't need that. But over the years, as we incrementally expand our grades and expand the population, we'll look at that parking deck. Moving a little closer to the building, you see metal panel, the same description of the logic and critical sequence I gave for you on Denmark. Similarly, we're looking to have Georgia Power get permanent power to the building this month. Exterior envelope completion the next three, four months. Metal panels are going in, glazing curtain wall. That's all happening. From this side, you do see junior achievement, and our development partner will please that the slab upgrade is going in the end of this week. They are all under contract now with their general contractor. So we're really looking forward to have that building element catch up to where Alliance is. But, you know, we've got eleven months to do that. So we're very comfortable with that dynamic happening. And then the last two sheets are just really historically of the delivery of the middle school program and the elementary school program. Any questions?
Although, wow, no hay that is great. Knock on wood.
Yeah.
Thanks, Tom.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Future addenda items, anybody? All righty. Next up, we have action items, which is board goals. We have spent a lot of time on this. Let's thank Ms. Crow for working with me on the, kind of taking all the different versions we've all been working on and kind of combining it into one. So that's what you see up there now. Has everybody had a chance to kind of look at this and how we kind of are aligning it with our strategic plan, but trying to have it measurable as well, trying to be consistent. Nancy, we've got, I think you wanted in there, the community involvement. Does anybody have any changes or additions, changes to the goals?
Looks good to me.
All right. So kind of using a new format, we'll see how that goes, and next year we can reevaluate, but.
So if you don't have any questions or comments, I'd recommend approval of the two thousand seventeen, two thousand eighteen Board of Education goals.
Is there a motion?
There's a motion.
Second.
Motion by Nancy, a second by Tom, all in favor. That is unanimous. Do we have a motion to go into executive session for personnel?
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Tom, second by Darla, all in favor. That's unanimous.